And paperwork. It is now seven P M. I call to order the East Point City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven P M. We will start with the indication led by our mayor pro tem Sarah Lucino. Continue with the pleasure of allegiance.
Dear God, we ask for your guidance as we undertake the business of the city of East Point. As we thank you for the many blessings you have given us, help us to lead our community with patience, tolerance, and understanding. We ask that you direct us to do what is best for all of our residents. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, thank you. Tonight, we will be doing a proclamation based upon Constitution Week, and I will be reading that proclamation. City of East Point Proclamation Constitution Week is September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Whereas, it is the privilege and duty of all Americans to commemorate the two hundred and thirty-first anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas, public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuance of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Monique Owens, of the City of East Point and the City Council do hereby proclaim that September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all rights and responsibilities, which that privilege involves. And witness whereof, we have here unto set our hand and cause the seal of the City of East Point to be affixed this fifteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty. Moving right along. Please call the roll.
Mayor Owens.
Here.
Counselperson Baker.
Here.
Counselperson Curly.
Here.
Counselperson DeMonico.
Here.
Counselperson Lucido.
Here.
Excellent. Next is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the agenda.
Report.
I think we've got a couple, couple extra items.
Are you talking about with the grant that Mr. Fairbrother emailed us, Mr. DeMonico, or something?
Yes, that would be one, and then attorney-client privilege communication addition.
Okay, I think that for the closed session, I think that was already on here. So you want to make that? Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, sure, Sarah wouldn't mind mending your motion to, yeah, add the grant for election administration, and then it's an additional closed session item to, to the two that are on the agenda. It would be, well, I guess, Mr. Albright, which should be, uh, what should we say for that one?
Counselmember DeMonico, it's, uh, it's a legal opinion from Labor Council Brandon Fornier. Mr. Fornier is not going to be appearing for the closed session via Zoom, but he does have a letter that he has submitted, and that will be the topic of discussion for purposes of a closed session. It's based on attorney-client privilege communication.
Okay, yeah, those two items.
I'll motion to amend my, um, I'll amend my motion to add those two items.
And I'll still support.
Moved and support it. Thank you, Councilman DeMonico. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido.
Yes.
Counselperson Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Counselperson Curly.
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico.
Yes.
Next, we will be opening the first part of the hearing of the public. Each resident gets three minutes in addition to another three minutes at the second part of the hearing of the public before the close of the meeting. We ask you to address all of council and be respectful and talk to council as you want someone to talk to you. We will now be opening the hearing of the public. Please state your name and residency, please, Mr. Fairbrother.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone who wishes to speak, if they could please raise their electronic hand on Zoom. Madam Mayor, I see that Mandy would like to speak. Mandy, if you can hear us, the floor is now yours.
Good evening, council. Um, I attend every meeting, and at the last council meeting, I believe that Ms. Monique said that there was an event at Foot Locker on Thursday, September the tenth, and it was for all residents of East Point to attend. And, um, she was going to speak about the ranked choice voting and/or the DOJ to the people that attended. So I attended the meeting, and I was recording the event, and people were giving away things like Fred Miller, Blessing Hands, Foot Locker, one oh seven point five was there, and I not, not, not noticed that Monique appeared about four thirty-five to four forty-five, which I had been.
Stop you right now. I said, address all of council, and you're making it personal. So I'm going to end it with you, Mr. Fairbrother. Let's continue with the next person online. You want to be respectful.
It was your event.
Let's continue with the next person.
How childish.
Madam Mayor, I think this so far has been respectful, though. She was just mentioning.
Well, I asked her to not address, to address all of council, Councilman DeMonico.
It was your event. It was your event that I was speaking on. May I continue?
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, I would, I would refer to Mr. Albright on this matter.
Madam Mayor, as long as the speaker is directing the council as a whole, as, rather than a personal attack directed just at the council member or the mayor, they can speak on that, on that topic if they're speaking in about a particular event, as long as they're addressing the council as a whole.
Is that what you're doing, Ms. Mandy?
I'm addressing the council as a whole, but it was your event that I was addressing. So I'm letting the council know that I attended your event. None of the other council people were there. And it wasn't the agenda as your event.
No, I didn't have it on the agenda as my.
It is on the agenda, and, and, and read the last page of it when all the council members got to speak about what was going on in the city. You spoke that you were having an event at Foot Locker. Read the last page of the agenda. I'll wait for you to read.
It's not on the agenda, but go ahead, Ms. Mandy.
So at which time I was recording the whole event, um, she appeared between four thirty and four forty-five, and many journalists were approaching her for, about the event and the reason for it, and I was really happy that she finally appeared, because I really wanted to know what was being said about the DOJ or ranked choice voting, because I do work the polls, and, you know, I'm really concerned about my city and, and the ranked choice voting. It's not easy to work these events with these people standing over you. And I was asked by many security people that were there to stay away from the event person, and they kept approaching me, telling me to drive my car through to get any items. I said, I wasn't there for that. I was there to hear the speech on ranked choice voting. And then approximately at five thirty, East Point police arrived, and I was approached by them. They said they were there for me, and they were called, and, um, Mayor Monique Owens called the officer out of the car and said I was intimidating her and disrupting the event, which was a public event, and I feel that was an abuse of power. There was no reason for me to leave. I wasn't bothering nobody. I was standing over by a curb. I was waiting for the speech to be given that was never given, and I was told to leave the event. I have video of the whole event. I will give that to any council member, Mr. Albright, whoever wants to see it, but I was singled out in this event. There was no other East Point residents there that spoke about it. She did not speak about what the event was supposed to be about, and I think that was wrong. And if you go to any of the webpages, the neighborhood watch groups, these people are really upset that they were not notified because they don't come to these council meetings. So was this really an East Point event, or was it a Detroit event, or was it a photo op event? We don't know what this really was, and it needs to stop. I'm not going to be singled out by any council person up there. I do nothing wrong. I support my city. We had a neighborhood watch group. We had police there. We had fire there. We had a council person that attended. We had a really nice time. There was no calling out of people, no security people saying escort this person off, and I was the only white person there besides Fred Miller. So I really am going to say it's a little bit racial, too, that I was escorted off the property. And furthermore, I have investigated with an attorney, and I was told that's Foot Locker property, that she could not tell them to have me escorted off because it was her event. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
You know you're wrong.
Thank you for coming to my event. Continue to come. I appreciate you supporting the community. Anybody else that we have? Mr. Fairbrother?
Madam Mayor, I see no other hands raised and no other comments in the chat box, so I believe it's now safe to close the floor.
Okay, the first, I'm hearing that the public is closed. Ms. Mandy, if you would like to speak the second time, you have that chance. Thank you so much for continuously supporting me and the city of East Point. Next, we have the approval of minutes, council.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Yes, sir. Councilman?
Yes.
Curly, yes.
I would, I would move to approve the minutes of the September first, two thousand and twenty regular meeting.
Report.
Moved and support it. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Curly.
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido.
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico.
Yes.
Counselperson Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. The next item is scheduled hearing. There are no scheduled hearings, and next item is unfinished business, and we will be talking about approval to lease a four-wheel Elgin Roadwin vacuum street sweeper. Do we have our public director, Mr. Abraham, on the line to talk about this, or Mr. Blom?
Mayor, can I make a comment before, before they start?
Yes, please, Councilman.
Um, I guess for, for myself, I don't have anything different, or I don't need any additional information. I just, I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but I, I'd just like to go forward to just go out the bit on this. I think it's a great idea. We definitely, it's good to, to do so, and Ms. Lucido has mentioned that we, you know, if the bids are higher than what Mr. Abraham's brought forward, then we just go with what Mr. Abraham brought forward. So I don't know what everyone else thought on that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I agree with Mr. DeMonico. I've reviewed everything, and I've also spoken with Mr. Fairbrother in regards to this before the meeting. So I'm, I'm okay with making a motion at this time also.
Madam. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. How you doing tonight?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, respected council.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilman Curly, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the other two council members. I'm, I'm ready to move with the motion, although I appreciate, I think we got enough, I got enough information. I think everybody else did to not to go over the whole thing again, so I agree with the other two council members. Let's, let's move on with the motion and.
I didn't, I actually want to know about the leasing, and it's, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Abraham. Is Mr. Blom on here? Our finance director?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm here.
How you doing tonight, sir?
Good.
I'm good, thank you. I know we talked about, well, I didn't get to talk to you about it, about the leasing, and I want to know, was it better to write out, buy it out than lease it?
We, we had referenced it last time it came up, and the motor pool is a separate independent fund, and it does not have enough cash to outright buy it on its own. We had talked about the possibility of setting up a loan from general fund to the motor pool versus leasing it, but one way or the other, the motor pool will have to finance this particular piece of equipment.
So if the motor pool, you said we can get, borrow the money from the motor pool? Is that what you said?
We, we could set up a loan from the general fund to the motor pool. They basically would borrow money from the general fund, use that to buy the equipment, and then pay it back over a period of years, whatever we establish. So, you know, that, that would be a financing alternative, but the motor pool itself would have to finance this purchase.
Okay, so if we brought up a motor pool, would it be cheaper for us to borrow from that, the actual, this, um, this national intergovernment, I'm sorry, not that one, but is it the National Bank, T C F Bank? Would it be cheaper for us to do it in-house than with someone else?
We, we could set up a lower interest rate, and it would still earn the general fund more money than I can invest it at right now because rates are so low. So if we were going to go ahead with the purchase, then I personally would recommend that the, it be treated as a general fund loan and not as a lease.
Okay, so what would you think would be better, to borrow in-house and?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Borrowed in-house, yep.
Okay, council, was your idea still the same as far as borrowing it from somebody else and getting a higher interest rate, or borrowing it within the city's funding balance and saving more money?
I like the general fund motor pool idea.
So, okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Can I have a chance to clarify a few additional things? I believe when this item was initially presented to the Honorable Council a month back, Councilman Mr. DeMonico was under the impression that this contract we are piggybacking on, or it was advertised by a national IPA, which is a private organization. I want to give some additional clarification or few information to the Honorable Council, if you may allow me to do so.
Um, you know what? I don't know if it's going to be needed tonight, sir, due to the fact that, do you think that information is, in addition to more knowledge that we may need on, on our decision-making, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, please. Thank you.
First of all, in case we purchase this machine outright, it will cost us two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars, and then if we lease it for an eight-year period, we have to pay thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars over an eight-year period as interest. That is just for your information. First of all, going back to what I said earlier, this contract was awarded by City of Rochester Hills to Bell Equipment. City of Rochester Hills, together with Farmington Hills, Bloomfield Township, and Madison Heights, prepared a request for court and advertised it through Mieter, and it was, it was given to one hundred and fifty participants, or one hundred and fifty different vendors all over the country. It was advertised through Mieter, and then a four, four-member committee, I do, prepared the R F Q, and then advertised it on September first of two thousand and sixteen, and received bids on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen. So it was in the market for almost two months. And then City of Rochester Hills, being the principal procuring agency or the lead agency, reviewed the bids in partnership with Farmington Hills, Bloomfield Township, and Madison Heights, and then they received a four proposal, and a committee consisting of knowledgeable people, and then the vehicle management committee from these four cities evaluated the proposal and awarded the contract to Bell Equipment. So it was a contract prepared by these four cities, and then the contract was publicly advertised, and then it was publicly awarded. The reason why National IPA got involved with this one was City of Rochester Hills' purchasing process and the qualification of their personnel were evaluated by National IPA, and they accredited City of Rochester Hills, being they have knowledgeable people handling the process, and they vetted their process, and they accredited this contract to be worthy, to be a contract under National IPA. We do not have an in-house expertise to develop the specification for an equipment like this, a vacuum street sweeper, which we never purchased. And then we are, we get under this national, under this contract awarded by City of Rochester Hills, we will get eighteen percent discount on the chassis, amounting to eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, three percent discount on the sweeper unit, which is five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, and a discount of four thousand, five hundred offered by Elgin. Altogether, we will save almost forty thousand dollars in case we proceed with this one. In case we advertise this through MyDL, or if we purchase this equipment through MyDL, we, there is no contract available in MyDL for a whole sweeper. The chassis is sold separately, and the sweeper component is sold separately. So we have to award a contract to someone, and then that contractor has to purchase the chassis and the sweeper, and then fabricate it, and it will take about eight months to fabricate and deliver the sweeper. Whereas, in case we proceed with this contract, we can get the sweeper within a month. And then, again, if we vote and then advertise or award the contract through MyDL, we will end up in paying almost forty thousand dollars more. The, there are eight government agencies who bought sweeper units or sweepers under the same contract awarded by City of Rochester Hills. That is Rochester Hills bought a unit in two thousand and seventeen, Farmington Hills bought one in two thousand and eighteen, Bloomfield Township bought one in two thousand and seventeen, Madison Heights bought one in two thousand and seventeen, Auburn Hills bought a unit in two thousand and seventeen, Roseville bought a unit in two thousand and eighteen, Sterling Heights bought one in two thousand and seventeen, and Wayne County bought seven sweepers in two thousand and nineteen. Ironically, the unit that Roseville purchased in two thousand and eighteen, they paid two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Even, even then, they did not get an attachment called wandering horse. That alone cost ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So now we are paying two hundred and seventy-six thousand in case this contract is approved, and that is within or within or below what Roseville paid in two thousand and eighteen. And then the.
Send us this information. I mean, I, this is the first I've heard, I think, everything you just said.
Well, most. I did, I, I did send this to our city manager, and then I was under the impression that she shared with all the council members, councilmen. And then.
Oh, okay. I have not seen.
I can, pardon me.
I did not receive it.
So I, Mr. Abraham, I guess what council is saying, that some of this information, it seems like it's a little bit extensive, and I guess we should have got it beforehand since it is assisting us in making better decisions. And I, I know that you say you sent it to the city manager. She probably was so busy and overwhelmed, it passed her mind to send it to us. So, Councilman DeMonico, what was your suggestion? Because it sounded like you wanted to be sent before you made the, made a decision, or?
Yeah, I'd hate to, I mean, I think we're not in a hurry anyway, but I, I'd hate for this to show up on another agenda in a row, but I think that's probably the most appropriate, and I'd like to see this, because if it was, in fact, out on Mitten, and all these cities have bought it, then I think that's great, but I'd like to see all that beforehand. So I, I just motioned then that we hopefully finally take action on this next meeting then, and table until then.
I'll support.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham, for coming in tonight. We'll be looking forward to that extensive information and better helping us with making a decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, we have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson DeMonico.
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido.
Yes.
Counselperson Curly. Counselperson Curly.
Are we, you're on mute?
Yes.
I, I think I heard a yes there. Counselperson Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes, thank you. Next item is reports from administration, starting with our city manager, Ms. Doom. Good evening.
You're muted.
Ms. Doom?
Yes, I was muted. Here I am, talking away. I try not to have the sound on, so my peak of ruffling doesn't disturb everyone. But I would like to share for those who are listening tonight that we did have a water break on Roseland between Ten and Stevens, so if you notice, the water's turned off. If it's back on, I haven't spoken with Mr. Abraham, so it, it may be cloudy for a while. We have heard from a few folks on, on some of the local pages that they're, they've noticed a change in the water, so just be aware that we did have a water main break there this afternoon, and I did notify all of council, but now I'd like to, you know, let the public know. We're very successful so far with the resurfacing project, working on Roxanna, Holland Street, and now moving on to Stricker. Stricker is in a little poorer, poorer condition than the other streets, so it will need a little bit more work, but that's, you know, underway, and we're really looking forward to having those three streets done, possibly the fourth one. As we said, we would be very cautious, starting with two streets first, making sure that we didn't have major cost overruns, then moving on to the third and the fourth street. So we'll be keeping you updated, and we'll keep the community updated as we move forward. And I'd like to share with you, you know, we're getting really close to the end of the census. September thirtieth, pretty much wrapping things up, and we stand as of today, we've got seventy-eight point five percent of our residents are reporting. That's a good number, but it could be considerably better. The more folks who will take that five minutes to go online or fill out their census forms, that's more money for your libraries, for your schools, for your programs. That's eighteen hundred dollars you're losing for your community, whether, look, the, the streets I just mentioned, you know, we have funds coming in, those are, those are funds that you've already paid taxes for. So by reaching out to the federal government, taking your census, you're actually getting the money back that you've paid, and we certainly don't want it to go to other cities. So although we're doing well, I did take a quick survey of surrounding communities, and most of them are, are, have low eighties, all the way up to very high eighties, that their community's reporting. So I just really want to impress upon everyone that it's great that they're having, some of our neighboring communities are having, you know, really high numbers of, of residents reporting, but we have to catch up to them very, very quickly. We don't have much time, because we do have an older city. We have aging infrastructure, and like every established community that's been around for a number of years, we need every federal dollar to be able to help our residents, whether it's senior programs, whether it's helping people go to school, it, it's, the, the list is endless of all the wonderful things that having those federal dollars come back to us will do for the community. So this is my pitch tonight, and I will keep pitching all the way through September thirtieth, that it's very, very important, if you haven't taken the time, or if you know someone who's been a little hesitant about, you know, going online or has misplaced their form, we're, we're happy to help you in any way we can. Um, we're, we're happy to help you in any way we can. We just need to get those numbers up. So we get our fair share of federal dollars and that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Doom, council?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Doom, is there any way we can put out maybe one more shout out on Facebook about the census? Um, that'll maybe give, you know, us an opportunity, we could all share it on our personal pages also to try to get that last minute push maybe?
Right, I did, um, you know, I went, been going to the census site and just taking a look at, I said, our other communities. Uh, taking a look how the state's doing versus the rest of the country. And they do have quite a bit of information on there that I have been um posting on our Facebook site. So today I posted a new um, you know, kind of a blurb about the census and how it helps libraries. Uh, before this week is over, I will post other areas that it's really going to help. Just to keep that awareness going and fresh on our Facebook page. Um, we'll also probably do a countdown for the last ten days, letting people know we really need to get those numbers up a little bit higher to benefit our community.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, um, Mayor Pro Tim. Also, in addition to that, are you putting little notes about the census in the water bills?
Mr. Blum, I'll turn that to him.
Mr. Blum is actually next on the scene, so Mr. Blum, I'm gonna just go ahead and hand it to you. Since you're next to be uh spoken to. Good evening. So we can roll right into that.
Uh, yes, as far as a uh message on the water bill, by the time the next one goes out, the census will be closed.
Okay.
Bill won't hit till October first at the earliest. So there was no plan on putting a, a message on there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if you're done with Ms. Doom.
I am.
Okay, then I will move on.
I had a couple of questions though.
Okay, I, I'll pause.
Miss Doom.
What, Ms. Doom, I'm sorry, Mr. Monaco, please.
Sure, I guess the first one was about absentee ballots. Uh, could you let the public know when they should expect it to be mailed out?
Absolutely. Uh, we have an anticipated date that we should be receiving those ballots on September seventeenth. Um, we do of course have to, uh, by law, send out the military absentee ballots first. And once they are processed and mailed out to our uh folks who are away from home. Then we will mail them to the community and that anticipated mailing date begins on September twenty-fourth.
Councilman?
And I, I was wondering if we had an update on the Commercial Kelly Properties. Been over forty-five days since we had that motion at the table here. What's uh, what's going on with those buildings?
Let's see if Kim is on this. Kim, Kim is with us also. Would you like her to speak separately or have her step up now?
She can step up um now since we.
Okay.
Councilman um brought up the subject. Good evening, Ms. Holman, how are you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, yes, we are negotiating the final terms of the purchase agreement and should have that finalized by the end of the week.
Sounds good. Stay right there. Councilman De Monaco, you have any more questions for Ms. Holman while she's here?
Uh, no, I think that sounds good. I'm glad we'll get that taken care of. Um, and I think I just have one more question then. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Holman. Uh, one more for Ms. Doom. I was curious and I saw George had joined at some point. In case you didn't know the answer to this one, I was wondering what our policy is on no-knock warrants in the city. Um, I was curious if we could talk about that for a second.
Director, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, how are you? The councilman had a question about, um, go ahead, um, councilman, say again, um.
The, I, I have the, I have the answer for that.
Yeah, the answer, okay.
Um, just real quick, uh, typically we do not conduct no-knock warrants. We follow the Michigan statute in regards to those. Um, the only time we would uh conduct a no-knock warrant, if we have reason to believe. That somebody is armed in the residence. That's probably the number one reason, but um. You know, I've been in this business a long time. I think we've only executed. One no-knock warrant in probably a decade. It's not a, it's not a common practice to do that. And if you do conduct a no-knock warrant, you have to list that in the affidavit, the reasons for that, and the judge or magistrate decides whether or not they're gonna approve that.
Is that similar in the, I, I mean, probably mostly examples, I guess, I've seen nationwide, we're not in Michigan. It's probably different, different law in different states then, or is that?
Yes, the, the, the law varies in different states, but I'm just telling you from a law enforcement uh. Person of many years, it's not a common practice in Michigan to execute a no-knock, uh, no-knock uh search warrant. And again, you have to list the reasons in the affidavit that has to be approved by the judge or magistrate.
Yeah.
It's very specific reasons why you would not knock.
Okay. Um, yeah, appreciate that.
No problem.
Thanks.
Any other questions, um, councilman?
Uh, that'd be all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to um the finance director, Mr. Blum.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council. Um, I just wanted to get you updated that uh, the audit will begin on Monday, September twenty-eighth. Uh, it will be uh all virtual, which ought to be interesting. I'm gonna be doing a lot of scanning and emailing. Uh, they will be contacting if they have not already, uh, the mayor and one or two council members. Uh, prior to the start of the audit, so if, if they have not contacted you, uh, be prepared. Um, and that's all I have, uh, I've got enough on the agenda later, so unless you guys have questions, I'm done.
Any questions, council? Saying now we're gonna go to our city attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, uh, members of council, all of my, all of my comments this evening relate to the closed session uh this evening. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions uh unrelated to the closed session that the council members may have at this time.
Council, any questions for our city attorney at this time? Thank you. Um, you wanna go write it? I'm sorry?
I said, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Next item is new business. I'm gonna do the introduction of first reading ordinance number one-two-zero-one. Article twenty-seven, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Crowe.
Thank you. I would, uh, I would move to introduce and give first ready to ordinance number one-two-zero-one, which would amend chapter fifty zoning article. Seventeen supplemental regulations. Section fifty dash one sixty-two exterior lighting regarding string and or rope lighting. And schedule the ordinance for second reading and consideration for adoption at the city council regular meeting on October sixth, two thousand twenty.
Support.
Move that support. Any questions on this?
Was any? Well, I was just going to mention, I guess as uh liaison to planning, I was wondering if. We were saying anything about that. It's, it is pretty straightforward, but uh, the planning commission was calling it the Yelensky ordinance uh for, our planning commissioner that brought it up. But uh, I think it, it makes sense and um, obviously the whole planning commission did as you saw.
I guess Molly's question, um, if I'm not mistaken, was telling residents that they can't put string lights around their. Uh, on their property as far as their um, their windows and things like that. It's telling them what they can and can't do with their own property. Uh, Ms. Doom?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, am I reading that right?
Yes, you are.
Restricting um residents on how to decorate their houses?
Uh, businesses.
Businesses, okay, I said homes too, okay. I never wanted uh do that. Okay, council, you wanna go move forward with this? I have a motion, support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, next item is the introduction and first reading ordinance number one-two-zero-two, amend chapter fifty zoning. Council?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Councilman Crowe?
Thank you. I would move to introduce and give first ready to ordinance number one-two-zero-two. Amend chapter fifty zoning article seventeen. Signs section fifty dash one eighty-four prohibited signs, string and or rope lighting. And schedule the ordinance for second reading and consideration for adoption at the city council record meeting on October sixth, two thousand twenty.
Support.
Move to support. Any conversation on this?
Uh, just, just one question, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Um, maybe somebody can answer from, from the administration. Will the, does the planning commission now have a copy or will they have a copy of both of these ordinances so they'll have it for their record?
Ms. Doom? Yeah, I, I, that's a good question. Um, I've never been asked that question before. I assume that we always have copies available for people, but. Councilmember Curly is asking if there's one that is going to be given to each of the members. We certainly can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be good. They, they were.
They have.
They were fifty-fifty part of this, this whole thing, so I think they ought to know what they actually recommended.
You know, Mr. Curly, they, they all have copies of it. They, they reviewed it and Mr. De Haan's showing us his copy right now, actually.
They have copies, right. They probably had it before I had it.
All right, we got a motion and support. Let's move on. Um, please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, next item, item is approval of special land use for Drew's Garden.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve special land use as recommended by the planning commission on September third, two thousand twenty. For Drew's Garden located at two-three-seven-five-one Grashit. Property ID number two dash fourteen dash thirty dash four oh one dash zero zero seven. To expand the retail sales of plant materials, produce and gourmet items. To be located in a permanent forty by twenty foot tent and in accordance with the approved site plan dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Support.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's Mary Van Heren. If I could just.
Go ahead tonight.
Thank you, very good.
Yes, ma'am.
Just ask Ms. Lucido if she would consider modifying that ordinance to include that the site plan will comply with fire code requirements.
I will amend my motion to include that.
Still support.
Thank you so much. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting as well. Move this supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Next item, approval of cost to apply for transportation grant.
Madam Mayor, I will motion to approve the proposal for McKenna and Associates to prepare and apply. For a grant from Sumco for the Planning Assistance Program for Transportation and Quality at the cost of nine hundred dollars.
Support.
Any conversation on this? Move that supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Next item is the bid award for the fire station rear parking lot. We have our fire director, um, Nick Sage. I don't know if you wanna, if council is ready to move forward with this, if you'd like to say anything at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I really have nothing to add at this point on that, but thank you.
Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Do we have any questions um for him tonight, council?
No, Madam, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll motion to award a contract for the fire station rear parking lot to Mattelli Cement Company LLC at the cost of seventy-six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars with a five percent contingency.
Support.
Move this supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, next item is the bid award for the rock salt. We have our director, Mr. Abraham, if anybody has any questions for him concerning this.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion if you're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I motion to award contract to purchase up to twenty-six thousand tons of road salt. From Detroit Salt Company at the cost of forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents per ton for an amount of not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll support, okay, and Mr. Baker supports too. I, I did just have a quick question, not for Mr. Abraham, but more for Mr. Blum, just in general, I was wondering, um. We have the line item. I was wondering if when we mentioned which funds are budgeted, if we could put the amounts with them too in the future? Because we do all of the line items, but I know we've changed some and sometimes I'm not a hundred percent sure if I have the latest. Uh, so I think that'd just be helpful um for future purchases.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I think we have that. Did we um get a roll call on that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Can, uh, we do, we have motion and support. Can you please call the roll, sir?
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
The next item is the request by the East Point Advocates Supporting Equality for a space to erect a sculpture at Candy Park, council?
Madam Mayor, if you, if I may, can I start by introducing this because they have already come to the Parks Commission?
Sure, and I know you've been liaison on that, so I'll let you have the floor.
So um, this group did come to the Parks, uh, two Parks Commission meetings, so two months ago, and they proposed um to. They wanna put a statue talking about um, like representing all the residents in the city of East Point. Um, I think they still have a lot of work to go. I wanted to put this information in the packet tonight. For everyone to review because I know there's a lot of questions and I'm sure there's some other concerns also regarding this. I do know there's some people on the meeting tonight that are part of this group. So maybe one of them might be interested in kind of speaking and sharing where their idea like started and is coming from.
Anyone um out there for the, who's a part of the East Point Advocates Supporting Equality Group? Who like to see? Hi, good evening.
Hi, hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Well, first of all, thank you for putting this together because it's needed, especially at this time of systemic racism and so many protests. So I thank you um for that. Please speak at this moment.
Um, my name's Shelley Chapa and I'm here to represent the members of EASE. Um, EASE is an acronym for East Point Advocates Supporting Equality. The national stage and political, political climate lately have been filled with division. Um, inequality, systemic racism, violence and destruction. Our group was formed because of our love for East Point and our desire to bring our fellow citizens together. Instead of all of this division. Um, EASE is, is actually composed of six, a six-person steering committee. And an at-large subcommittee of associate members that is gonna continue to grow. Um, and there are several other people involved that don't want to be on the face of it, but they're backing us right now. Um, our committee right now is perfectly balanced between varying age groups, ethnic background, religious backgrounds, political viewpoints. Uh, collectively, our steering committee alone represents over a hundred and eighty years of East Point residents. Um, our goal is really simple. We just wish to stoke the fire of community, love, and to show the world that. Those in our city that believe in peace, equality, diversity and unity. Um, in the following presentation that, that you have in hand right now. Uh, you'll see a bold undertaking that we do wish to assume. One of the more important things to note is the undertaking is that we will not allow this to become anything more. Than a symbol of unity in our community. Our team will develop a plan and from top to bottom. Um, this will be a project for the citizens and by the citizens. And it will be driven by the citizens and we don't want it to become a vehicle for political, private, business or religious promotion. But we are going to hope that we get support from that, that segment.
Thank you. Again, thank you for putting this together because it's so needed and we just did the mural um at the Children's Garden, which promotes exactly what you're talking about. So to have, you know, a sculpture, you know, in addition to that, that would be awesome. Um, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mayor Pro Tim because again, she, she's with, she's the liaison of the park, so I'm wanting to speak a little bit more about this if she would.
So I really just want council to really take the time to review everything. And what I was hoping to get from actually EASE is maybe um some contact information, so if council comes up with some questions. That we can email them and maybe add this on to the agenda in the future again. Um, because, you know, this is, they're asking for a piece of our property um to put this up and I think. to put this up, and I think that they're going to do fundraising. Um, so like, one of the questions like I would have is if they're going to be doing fundraising, like, are they like a licensed charity? Because I think that they're going to have to be licensed to be able to do fundraising to purchase something to put in our parks. I think that'd probably be the more appropriate way of going around doing it. Um, if they're, you know, they'd actually have to be a charity, have like a 403(c), and, you know, things like that. And also, if, you know, they might be interested in reaching out to the Arts Commission to see, you know, when it comes to the actual cult, culture, sculpture, to make sure it's kind of, you know, work with them, because they are the ones that we kind of put our arts, you know, in the hands of in the city for their recommendation. So I think reaching out to them also would be important. Um, I don't know if any other council members would have anything or any questions for them.
Oh, probably in addition to what you said, I just want to say again, thank you for putting this together, and those members who are a part of this, and understanding the need and putting, pushing it forward. So again, thank you for your efforts. Council, did you want to say anything? I know this is just a discussion, so if council doesn't want to say anything, we can move forward to the next item.
Yeah, I was just, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilman D'Amico.
Well, I just saw Mr. Curly raising his hand, that was all. That's what I was going to say.
Councilman Curly, thank you.
You're muted. Harvey?
Councilman Curly?
Yes, thank you. I, I just think everybody on the council and administration are overwhelmed with anticipation for this to happen, and I would hope that this gets back on our agenda real soon, so we can take an official vote on it and give them as much support as we possibly can. And that includes financial to council members.
Absolutely. Councilman, Councilman Baker?
Oops.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that I thought it was a good idea as well. As I read through the agenda, I'm very much in agreement with this idea, so I thank the members of EASE for putting this together. I think it's excellent.
That sounds good.
Madam Mayor, if I could interrupt.
Usually we don't do that, Mr. Stacey, but since you're such a big part of the, we usually don't do all that, but since you're such a big part of our, and do so much work, please, we're honored to hear what you have to say.
Well, as chairman of the Parks Commission, as, as Mayor Pro Tem Lucido mentioned at our August 12th meeting, they did present their proposal, and they're not looking for a huge piece of property. It is in Kennedy Field, Kennedy Park, I'm sorry, and it would be just east of the gazebo and north of Stevens Avenue, and John DeHaan is willing to discuss more of the proposal that was presented to the council tonight, just to give you a better idea of what this project is going to look like. And that night, the Parks Commission did unanimously approve, bringing it before council, what they're really looking for tonight is permission to be able to plan on using that piece of property, that this monument can start being worked on, because we do have to start on fundraising and everything else as soon as possible. So if you have any questions, John DeHaan would be a good resource to go to. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for what you do. Do we have, Mr. DeHaan, do you have a couple minutes? Are you there?
I do.
Yes, please.
So, this has been a labor of love between a number of us over the last three, four months, started with a discussion, you know, it seemed to start, it really ramped up with Mr. Floyd's passing, but more to the point, it's just there's such an ugliness in the world right now. Uh, if there's something that people can be bigoted about, it seems like they're being bigoted about it. I mean, only in this country. We're even creating bigots for political viewpoints. So, it's, it's, this is such an important thing. So we have engaged an artist, uh, and we have a tentative dollar amount that it's going to cost us for this sculpture, sculpture, and it is roughly $30,000, give or take. Uh, that doesn't even include what we are proposing to do for a little bit of a landscape architecture to place this in, and you should have, I believe, in your packets what we're doing. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Fairbrother has the most recent image that the artist has created for us. If he does, I would appreciate it if he would share it. If not, I can certainly send it via email to council. Um, so our group is, there are going to be many, there are going to be many mechanisms for fundraising. There's a councilperson Lucido's points about if we need to have a 501(c). We are, we are aware of that. We're not looking to make this into a huge, massive, complicated mission. We understand that there are certain legal aspects that we need to follow, and we're going to do that. We're going to dot the i's and we're going to cross the t's, but I honestly, I, short of having an approval for land, I don't really want, I want this to be about the people. I, let me take that back. Shouldn't say I. It's about the people. At the end of the day, it's about the people. It's about the people that we hope to pull into our group and say, we've had enough. This is what real community is. We don't look at color, we don't look at religious background, we don't look at sexual orientation, we look at equality. Um, so that is the whole crux of this. Uh, there are a lot of i's, dot, and t's to cross, but what we were looking for or hoping for tonight is an affirmation that you're all on board, and we're not asking city for money. If the city wants to contribute some money, God bless, but we're not asking you for a penny. We're just asking for the approval to use land on the park, and we will go out and we will do the heavy lifting, we'll get our tin cups and hit the streets, but we're ready to dig in and do it, it needs to do what needs to be done. Um, Mary, did I miss anything?
Um, I don't think so. I think one of the things that we have to be concerned with is the fact that, right at this moment, we have an artist who's willing to work with us, and he's committed to doing the project because of the symbolism that entails for him, and we really want this to be about an embracement and welcoming of, to all, to East Point, because this is supposed to be a family town, and we want that monument to be representative of being a family town, embracing everyone who comes in.
Sounds good. Thank you all who put this together. Again, I agree with Ms. Lucido on, I agree what you said about them getting together with the Arts Commission on this, since, you know, they do so much with art, and then also the Planning Commission. Maybe they can do some type of dual meeting or something like that and get back to us. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, just real quick too, I mean, I, I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's great. I mean, anyone that wants to show, you know, any sort of community pride or effort and improve our community or add to our community or add to our parks, I would support all of that. Um, I do think that maybe, um, just to make sure, before we turn around and approve them actually putting it in the park, I would like to maybe get a recommendation from administration also, um, on what their opinion is on it, and then add it to our next agenda for a possible motion, um, if we want to approve for them to put it up in Kennedy Park or not.
Yeah, and again, I would like them to actually work with the Arts Commission on that as well, and I know we partnered up with the DIA, so that would be good too, for the, the EASE, the EASE group out there. Hopefully you guys can partner up with the Arts Commission and also the DIA, and we might be able to get in the Anton Art Center that's in McComb to get the funding to pay for this project. They have a lot of funding and grants, and if we can get the grant and things like that, I'm for it, and I just want to say, good job. Council, did you want to say anything else concerning this matter?
Madam Mayor, just, just to say, just to say that I'm excited about that fact. I, I may go out there tomorrow with stakes and stake off, stake off some property for you.
Oh, wow, okay. Sounds good. Councilman D'Amico, did you want to say something real quick? I think I heard you.
Sure, I was just curious. We met, of course, Ms. Mary, Mr. John, and Ms. Shelley on the committee. You said there were six of you. I didn't know if any of the other members were on, if they could say hello if they were on the meeting here.
God bless everybody.
Hey, Cardi, how are you and Madam Mayor and Council?
How are you? Thank you for being a part of this. Anybody else?
Gary's being quiet, but Gary's part of us too.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you all for what you do, and keep it up. Um, we're going to move along to the bid award for the mobile column lift, council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before I make the motion, I just want to say that, um, if anybody knows me, they know that in order for me to change the light bulb, I have to turn the electricity off. That's how inept I am, but I appreciate the fact that we've got, I don't know, maybe 40 different pictures of, of this, um, item, so I don't need any more, I don't need any more information, but I'm just going to make the motion and we'll move on with it. I would move to award the bid to the Equipment Distributor Incorporated to deliver a mobile column lift Mohawk model DC MP-18-630, four columns at 68,000 pounds capacity, for a total cost of $55,843.
Or, any conversation on this, council?
Just one quick comment. I think I was just happy to see the analysis of it also in here. You know, they analyzed each of the four bids, and I'm, this, of course, is something we should be happy to pay more for, as it's, of course, a very dangerous thing you're doing when you're using this equipment, so I appreciate all that information, kind of like Mr. Curly said.
Thank you. Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly.
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Councilperson D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, next item is changes to administrative rules and regulations.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Blum.
I, I was going to give some explanation on some of these, unless you guys just want to go ahead and improve it.
Right, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
A motion is revolve that East Point City Council approves amendments to section 6.2, 7.2, and 8.2 of administrative rules and regulations as attached.
Support. Move and support it. Any questions, council? Saying none? No, sir?
Sorry, so is, is this proposal coming from then you, Ms. Doom, and Mr. Blum? I mean, I read through it, but I was just curious how this, how this came about then.
Um, it was, it's lining up the admin rules and regs with the various union contracts that were approved back in June, just cleaning up some language and getting everybody synced up, just trying to make the non-union equitable with the unions.
Okay, yeah, I just, I guess the only comment probably I have is just, I'm never really a fan of turning sick time in for money, and I think I've brought that probably up in the past and probably even before December, but I used a ton of sick time back in December, and I think it just promotes possibly people coming that work sick and things like that, but it did seem like it was somewhat limited in there, so.
Yes, it was actually half of what the unions got. I made sure it wasn't as much for a non-union, mainly because it's turned in on an hourly rate basis, and non-union makes a little bit more per hour, so it keeps the cost of the city down.
Okay, appreciate it, Mr. Blum. Thanks.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Councilperson Curly.
Yes.
Councilperson D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, next item is approval of a budget amendment, VA 21-01. Mr. Blum, did you want to speak on this?
Um, yes, this is updating the current fiscal year budget for all of the various union contracts previously approved, but they were approved after the budget had been prepared, as well as any of the last fiscal year capital projects that had been budgeted but not completed by June 30th. Uh, we had a lot more than usual thanks to COVID, and that's, that's pretty much all that's, that's in here, is, is union updates and unspent capital funds. If you have any specific questions, I will field them at this point.
Council?
I had a quick question. What was our surplus or, you know, how, what's the general fund look like after all this? Then it looked like the rest of the bills were kind of coming to a close in the check register here.
Um, yeah, actually, I'm, I'm working on finalizing everything for audit. It appears the general fund will have a surplus of over a million dollars this year, in spite of everything that happened.
Oh, okay.
Between unspent capital and some unfilled staffing positions, and actually the impact of state revenue share reductions of net management, we had a bigger impact from court fines and fees than we did from revenue share.
Okay.
We, we're holding our own.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Mr. Blum, our finance director, on this issue? Saying none? Um, did we have a motion and support on this?
No, but I'll motion that we approve the budget amendment, VA 21-01, as presented.
Support. Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilperson D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Councilperson Curly.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, the next item is the schedule of the fiscal year 20 audit meeting.
Fair Mayor, I'll motion we set the meeting for Tuesday, December 1st at 6:00 PM for purposes of reviewing the audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2020.
Support. Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilperson D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
Yes.
Councilperson Curly.
Yeah.
The next item is discussion on policy for appointments and reappointments to boards and commission. That was brought up by Councilman D'Amico, so I'm going to give you the floor, Mr. Councilman D'Amico.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just thought that we could bring this up so we could talk about a more efficient way and, um, of doing board appointments and reappointments. I was just curious if any council members were thinking about certain topics, and I'd be interested if anyone did have any. I have a couple, but I was interested to hear what everyone else had to say, so that we can just go through this in a, in a better way.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you. I, I think probably if I wanted to change it, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea when somebody has a suggestion for an appointment, and the way we do it now, they bring it up at, right at the council meeting, and, you know, they say, I want to appoint Harvey Curly to the beautification committee. Well, I don't know who Harvey Curly is, so I just think it would be nice that if we had, uh, in advance, some little history on Harvey Curly, uh, where he lives, how long he's lived in East Point, what his background is, uh, and even if he, Harvey Curly wanted to come to the council meeting and introduce himself, that would even be nice, but to, to vote on somebody that we don't know from Adam, it sometimes gets a little uncomfortable.
Understood. Councilman, anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, well, one thing, um, also, and I'm, Councilman Curly kind of touched on this a little bit, but maybe on like our applications, encouraging residents when they apply, you know, sometimes they apply for multiple boards, like they're not, they just want to like, you know, be part of the city, but having, you know, asking them to attend a council meeting, introduce themselves, so like he said, we can, we know who these people are, and we have met them before, when they do apply to join a board or commission, just so, you know, we can at least familiarize ourselves with them. If we have questions for them, then at that time, we can always, you know, reach out to them, but I think this, you know, getting to know them, sometimes it make it easier to, to make our decision when we are choosing people to fill those positions.
Understood. Council, um, anyone else? Councilman D'Amico, you have the floor.
Sure, thank you, Councilman Curly and Mayor Pro Tem Lucido. I think, yeah, those are definitely great ideas. I, and I think the, the only other one maybe then that I would propose is just, and, and I'd like to, I guess, get feedback, just some Just some sort of, possibly some sort of term limits maybe even on boards or commissions in terms of maybe like twofold terms. It could be like maybe three altogether. If you were first started on like a partial term, sometimes, you know, you're, you're appointed to fill the rest of the term when someone, you know, moves out of the city or whatnot and can't do it any longer. But maybe just like then you have to come off the board just for a term. And then you could be reappointed to it if you still are interested. But just to kind of mix it up a bit, I don't know if anyone was interested in something like that. And I guess just in terms of what we're saying here about having the names on the, you know, in the agenda packet, I'd say on Friday or the, you know, coming to a meeting before their names in a packet. I don't know if maybe we'd be interested in modifying the ordinance about boards and commissions and we could put some of these items in there. So, so that we do follow them all, you know, through the future.
Sounds good. Well, good idea. Councilman Baker?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that just having a little more information ahead of time is, is very helpful. And then that way we're not making a rushed decision or a decision without as much information as we possibly have. And I think that's just being fair. I think it's being fair to ourselves and basically fair to all the applicants as well. So I would be in, uh, in agreement with that as well.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Understood.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I mean, I agree. I think that like Mr. Monaco said, like having the names in our packet on the Friday before, like we could just submit the names beforehand on who we're considering. I think that's a really good idea. I don't know if term limits I would necessarily agree to only because I know since I've been on council, there has been times when we came to filling positions that we don't have any applicants to fill the positions. And so some of those members at that time was a term limited out, that commission would no longer open meeting because they would have not had forums. So I, I don't, as much as I encourage to have new people on commissions and on boards, and I do support that. Um, I don't know what term limits only because of that issue.
On the term limits, I do absolutely agree with Councilman D'Monico. Because when we don't have term limits, like we did the last reappointment, we had people that had been on those boards for many years. And it did discourage a lot of residents who are trying to get involved. And that might be a reason why we don't have people applying because we keep choosing the same people. And so we don't, we want people who live here, who's been here for, for many years and new people who just moved here to have a chance. And since we don't have term limits, they haven't had that chance. Um, Mayor Proton. So, um.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilman Baker?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. Um, I think if we do that though, we have to be careful because you have people that are doing the hard work getting a lot of these commissions off the ground. So, you know, on one hand, I mean, I understand trying to get versatility in these commissions and everything. But, you know, I don't, my personal feeling is that you don't push somebody aside or remove somebody who's done the grunt work and getting these commissions going. You know, and I think everybody has opportunity to apply for other commissions, even if you're currently serving on one. So that's just my personal feeling about it. And I think that when we look at some of these commissions, that's what we see is that people who are still serving are the ones that help get it off the ground and really push it forward. So.
Agree. I agree with a lot of what you said. But again, even with all things that we do, there are limits to serving in community. And you can still assist and giving other people a chance. I believe in giving people chances and, and just seeing what people can do. If you don't give people chances, then it's going to discourage others. And the people that have been serving on these, these boards and starting these commissions and doing so much. We, you know, so many times we, we give them the kudos and thanks a lot. But at the same time, we have to pass the torch and give that information and knowledge to other people who want to be a help. And I believe that the term limits will help do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Baker. I'm, you're still on.
Yeah, just to respond, I mean, because I've had a discussion with people and, you know, you can look at any job. You can look at council and the mayor's seat of the, the same, in the same vein. And, you know, that's kind of setting a standard for boards and commissions, but then we wouldn't hold ourselves to that same standard. Because like say, for instance, if you've been on council for three terms or four terms or whatever, uh, I don't think that you necessarily have to move aside just so someone else can do it. Um, so I think that if we put that standard on boards and commissions, we, then we got to hold that same standard for ourselves. So I think we need to really be just sure about how we go forward with that.
Absolutely.
That's all. I'm done. I have nothing else.
No, I think everything you said was some good points. I agree to a lot of things you said. But again, um, even in my, in my role, you know, just getting someone ready to be able to take my place. And, you know, because you always have to have somebody come behind you in all that we do. I'm not going to be here forever. I'm going to get older. I might, you know, do something else later on. But I have to pass on the torch and teach somebody behind me. And that's why a lot of times, you know, me and Mayor Proton, we get together and, you know, we help each other with a lot of stuff. You know, I wasn't given the opportunity when I got in this seat to have somebody hand the torch to me and tell me how to run things. I had to learn a lot of things on my own. So in that sense, we want to make sure that a lot of people sometimes move out of East Point who's on these commissions or, or whatever they might do. We want to make sure that they give that knowledge and information for our new families who's moving here. So they can continue to keep East Point going. I think we had Councilman Curly wanted to say something.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, term, term limits have been a discussion for, for a long, long time, all the way from the Supreme Court. Uh, while the Supreme Court should have term limits, uh, all the way down to, all the way down to council people. So, uh, I'd have to take a really strong look at term limits for people on commissions. Uh, we've all, we've all experienced people on commissions, whatever, whichever one they are, to be incredibly knowledgeable and incredibly dedicated to this city, uh, that they love this city so much that they're willing to take the time to, to serve term after term. So, uh, that, that's going to deserve a very long discussion, I think. But I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up, Cardi, because these term limits are, are important. And should council have terminals? I don't, I don't know. You know, we're talking about, now we're talking about ourselves. When you say, well, we're, we're going to put term limits on ourselves. Uh, and what would that be? I don't know. But I think Rob brought a good point. If we're going to insist upon term limits for somebody on the beautification commission or parks and recreation, what about ourselves? Guys, I've been here twelve, I've been here sixteen years and I plan on being here another sixteen years. Well, wait a minute. You're just going to kick Harvey Curly off parks and recreation and he's been here for eight years. But you want to give somebody else a chance. Well, you know, it's going to be an interesting discussion when, when and if we ever bring it back.
Well, I value, I'm sorry, sir. Well, I value all of your comments, um, since Mr. D'Monico brought this up. Um, are you done with this topic or you want to add some more, Councilman?
I think we're done.
Um, thank you, Councilman D'Monico.
Sure. No, I think, I think that was some good conversation. I think maybe just something to think about for a while and we could bring it back up at some point then for potentially, um, some sort of motion.
Thank you so much for bringing this up. And again, everyone who is currently on a commission in East Point, we thank you and value your hard work and service and dedication to the residents of East Point and the city of East Point. Thank you so much. Going to our next item is the memorandum of understanding. Um, who wants to take this? Is it Mr. Fairbrother? Because I know you are the speaker or our city attorney.
Yeah, absolutely, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of council, as you may recall from the last meeting, I had mentioned that I believe that we were going to receive a grant worth approximately ten to fifteen thousand dollars to have Ms. Grace Ramsey help serve as our voter education coordinator to help educate our voters, our council, and our election precinct workers on ranked choice voting and how the process of ranked choice voting is going to work for our upcoming November third city council election. This here enclosed is a, a contract between, I believe it's called the Proteus Fund and the city of East Point. And I respectfully request city council today to approve the contract so that we can execute it tomorrow and get started.
Council, any questions on this?
A motion, we authorize city administration to enter into an agreement with Proteus Fund, a five-one-C-three organization on behalf of Democracy Rising for the purpose of the East Point City Council ranked choice voting election scheduled to be held on November third, twenty twenty.
Fairbrother, I had, yeah, support. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Fairbrother, now this grant that we're going to be talking about on the last item, is this grant going to cover this money?
Oh, they are, just so you know, Madam Mayor, they are two separate agreements, two separate grants. Um, this one is, even though they are two separate grants, they will both be used in conjunction to help educate our voters and our, our electorate as well as members of council, my staff and the election precinct workers.
Okay. What kind of ideas have you had? Give me one or two ideas and we can go to the next item.
Oh, we've, we've got tons of ideas, Madam Mayor. Um, one of them, uh, one of the fun ideas is we are going to, to again reinvent our website, voteeastpoint.com. Um, another fun idea is that actually in the next grant you're going to learn about is that we, uh, they are offering to buy all of the city of East Point, all of the, the workers here in city hall and across our entire enterprise T-shirts um, that we're going to advertise East Point votes on. Um, there's going to be a lot of fun stuff that is, uh, that's going to be encouraging our residents to vote, to get out and vote. And, uh, and I look forward to it. It's, it's going to be a lot of work, but a lot of fun.
Yeah. And if you need to use the previous people that ran, um, they were the first people that, you know, were part of the ranked choice voting. I believe it was, um, Ms. Lucido was a part of it. Also, Ms. Rafferty, Ms. Hall Rafferty, you know, if you want to use them in assistance, you know. You know, they have so much information on that as well. So we can use the people that first was a part of it and help, you know, let's do so with that. Thank you. The next item, I'm sorry, let's go with, we have motion and support. Let's do the roll, please.
Councilperson D'Monico?
Yes.
I believe the second there was councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Yep.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yeah. The next item is discussion on social media. That was brought up by Councilman D'Monico. So I'm going to give him the floor. Councilman?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just, this was the, well, let's see, let me back up here. So back in April, we, we just had talked briefly about social media and about the city's website. And we just decided that if there was any individual council member item that any, anyone wanted to put on the website or on the Facebook, it had to be run by the rest of council. And we just did not seem to follow that policy. Um, on Friday, um, when, uh, Madam Mayor, you asked the city to put this event you did at Mr. Dre's barber shop on the Facebook page. Uh, this was just, you know, an event that you put together. Um, so we're just not, we're not following our own motion. And I just wanted to bring this up so that we could be on the same page again. And, you know, I don't think that that should have been posted on there.
That was the motion on that. You said, well, um, again, it was not, I wasn't following. It was something that was needed. So, and according to that nine eleven, we didn't have anything for our officers and show appreciation to it, to them. And so I will not apologize for doing something for our first responders and those who lost their life on nine eleven. So I will not do that. Now, moving forward, yes, you're absolutely right. But since we didn't have anything in place to show our appreciation to, to those that give their life every day and who are losing their life currently through what's going on, I will not apologize for that. But I agree with you. We do need to follow our, our policies and I always do that. But I thought this was a need to do that at this time. And if I had to do it again, I would.
Well, Madam Mayor, I mean, this, uh, this event, um, first of all, well, first of all, so we had this motion. It's not being followed. If the city was throwing it, we would have had it on our own city property. This was held at just a business in the city. There were, you know, free donuts or free food or something, I believe the flyer said. Were, this is, it's, it's not a city event at that point. I think the flyer just said, um, you know, East Point Mayor Monique Owens and its first responder appreciation, but he used stock photos. It wasn't even pictures of East Point first responders. It, it wasn't, it wasn't a city event. That, that's the point though. Uh, it, it should not have been on the East Point pages. Of course, if we do something as a city and honor our first responders, we definitely should do that as often as we can. Of course, nine eleven is a very good time to do that, but we had not put that together as a city. The city runs the executive branch of the government. They should be posting on the page. This was inappropriate. I mean, it, you didn't invite, I mean, I didn't get invited. I don't know if anyone else, uh, I guess got invited. I didn't even know about it until I saw it on the pages either. I mean, to be frank, it's a campaign event. It's not a city event. This was not a, a city event.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I mean, I know that like, I think me and the rest of council would definitely, if it was something in the future that you were interested in doing, um, having some sort of event for first responders on nine eleven or, you know, around nine eleven. Um, I think that that would be a great idea. But I do understand where Mr. D'Monico is coming from because it's also kind of advertising for like a personal business in the city. Even though I know what they were doing, they, they were just, you know, offering donuts and coffee. But it is advertisement also for that business. And we can't become like this advertising chain for, you know, all the different businesses in the city. And every time this business holds this event or if they're having a sale, I'll be posting them, you know, on our Facebook or on our social media pages. So I do understand where, where Mr. D'Monico is coming from with that.
And so do I. I agree both with you. But again, this is not advertising the business. This is advertising the appreciation of officers. And again, I do not apologize. Anything else on this discussion?
Well, I think since this was brought up earlier to the, in the hearing of the public, the use of our police department, it sounds like at this event on Thursday, the police were called on a resident that was just attending an event in the city. I don't understand what was, uh, what was going on here. I, I think that needs to be addressed also.
By whom?
Well, it's not, I mean, Madam Mayor didn't, it sounds like you, you caught someone not related.
It's not on the agenda and I don't have to address that. If you wanted more information, you can talk to the people that were involved, which was the police department director, Rohit. You can contact him personally and find out everybody that gets, um, asked to leave a, a property. We will not address that at every council meeting. We will not.
I want to make it clear, we shouldn't, we can't, council people shouldn't be using the police department to remove people from events. And I'm not sure how that even happened. The, the police department should also not be doing that. I don't know why all this occurred at, at that event.
And since you don't know, then you want to continue to go to the next item on the agenda, sir?
Uh, sure. Why not? What do we got? Uh, well, we've got the one we added to the agenda here. We've got, uh, right, the election administration grant. Sure, Mr. Fairbrother, if you wanted to talk about that.
Mr. Fairbrother, please. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of council, um, at the recommendation of Mayor and council, I've been applying for as many grants as humanly possible. Um, I'm delighted to say that the Center for Tech and Civic Life has decided to extend the city of East Point Clerk's Office a grant for two hundred and fourth, just over two hundred and four thousand dollars um, as a result of the Zuckerberg Chang donation recently. Um, this grant will be used for many things, including ensuring safe election day voting, expanding voting education and outreach efforts, and launching poll worker, worker recruitment and training. Um, so I'm delighted to bring this before council. Um, I'm also requesting permission to expend these funds as time is of the essence. And, um, it's, we are going to move very, very quickly here in the next six weeks prior to this election. Thank you. And, uh, hopefully the city council will accept this grant.
Um, city council?
Girl, I'm, I'm hoping we accept that grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life for two hundred four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars for the purchase of planning and operationalizing safe and secure election administration in the city of East Point. Further authorized. Further authorized city administration to expend the funds in accordance with the Safe Voting Plan application. I think it all looks great, Brian, thanks.
Move to support, I thank you, again, thank you, Mr. Fairbrother. We got motion and support, please call the roll.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes, thank you. Next item is payroll and bills.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of $2,863,167.78.
Support.
Move to support, any questions on this council?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blom, it looked like some of those State of Michigan projects that we were paying for seemed pretty old. Sorry, I don't have the number next to me, but we paid them for like the Topher project, Boulder to David, you know, those. Shouldn't we have already, that's in this current fiscal year, some of those projects were done long ago. You're muted, Randy.
There we go. Yeah, the state generally takes about 18 months to close out any project. So, we end up getting a final bill. When, when they do that, it just depends on how long it takes them. It's not unusual that it's a couple fiscal years after the project was completed.
Okay.
I, I don't know specifically how much Topher was, but it was a minimal amount compared to the total bill there.
Oh, sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, council? You have motion and support, please call the roll, please.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
And counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the hearing of the public, this is the second hearing of the public. Mr. Fairbrother, you can open it up, please. Again, you get three minutes. Please state your name and residency.
All right, residents of East Point, hearing of the public is now open. If you wish to speak to the mayor and council tonight, I ask that you raise your electronic hand. I can see, Madam Mayor, that there are already a few people raising their hand. The first one on the list is Steven Salas Savage. I apologize if I butchered your name. Steven, if you can hear us, the floor is now yours.
Good evening.
I, I'll take it real quick. Steven Sosavich, 30-year resident of East Point, I've always lived here. I would just like to make a comment on something I heard in the meeting, and it came up a few times, that this thing about the police call to a city event, that I do agree with Cardy. I, I feel that this is something I think that the city should discuss a little bit more, and the public should know. I mean, what happened? I mean, if the resident was in the wrong, we should get all the information. If the resident wasn't in the wrong, or in, you know, we should also get the information. So, I, regardless of what the outcome is, I do feel that the residents need to know what happened within the situation. Regardless if, you know, whatever they claim the reason was that this happened, but it, it should be investigated. Things like that shouldn't happen i- in the first place, and when it does, I, I, I feel that when a council member asks for it to be looked in, that it shouldn't just be brushed off. I, I really think that it should be looked into, because that's a serious accusation against our mayor, because the woman's comment was she felt that the mayor did it for a race reason. And that's, that's, I think, a serious accusation that I didn't think was brought up often enough in this meeting. That, I don't know about you, but if I were to be called racist, and I'm not, I would, would, would want a chance to defend myself. But I'd also, you know, want the proper facts to be out there, awesome. So, I just would like to end it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person on the hearing of the public that would like to speak.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Mary Hall Rayford is the next one on the list. Ms. Hall Rayford, if you can hear us, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. It, it, yeah, it's been a very interesting evening, but what I'd really like to comment on of what Steven said before you, rather before me, th- this seems to be the second time that I've heard about police being called on citizens for no apparent reason other than a personal issue. That's really disturbing to me, and I think that's something that should not happen unless someone is, you know, threatening physical harm or whatever, but simply because a person dislikes someone doesn't mean that a police should be called. But we, we've got a problem here, we need to resolve it before it explodes into something that nobody in this city, I'm sure, wants to hear on the media. So, I would ask everyone on the council, how do we address this? Is this an ethics board situation? Is it a legal situation? Exactly what is it? And how do we resolve it to keep it from going any further? Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Um, let's go to the next one, please.
Madam Mayor, Sheila Yulinski is the next individual who is on the list.
Yes, ma'am, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I just wanted to touch lightly upon the discussion of term limits on the commissions. And my point of view would be, I don't think someone who's been on a commission for more than whatever you're going to set as a term limit should be not accepted back onto the commission just because they've been on it. And I don't believe that people do not apply to run for commissions just because long-term people have been on those commissions. People don't run for commissions because they don't want to. They don't need to be strong-armed, and they, they, if they want to do it, they're, they're going to do it. I've been a resident for 26 years, I've been on the planning commission honestly for many years, and have enjoyed every minute of every year of it, and we work very hard.
I do nothing, William, in the bottom of the fifth.
I'm sorry, Ms. Yulinski, go ahead, sorry.
Um, and I, I just want to say, you know, don't discount people or remove them simply for the fact that they've been on a commission for a long time. Honestly, if you're on for a long time, I, I think that's a lot of experience, it's a lot to learn. And I do encourage new people to apply for commissions and get involved in the city, because you can't make changes without getting involved. That's a motto I've always had, and, you know, our commissions do a great job, but please consider the term limits and not accepting people back because they've been on for quite a while. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for what you did in the past on the commission as well. Anyone else, Mr. Fairbrother?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Ms. Alyssa Diebolt would like to speak.
Okay, good evening.
Hi there, I just wanted to reach out to the community. I'm the chair of the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, and we have launched our 2020 Resident Art Exhibition where East Point residents 18 and older can submit artwork. In our new normal of world, it will be going digital. The application is done via Google Forms, and it's available on our Facebook page, the City of East Point Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. And we will be taking everyone's photographs of all their 3D and 2D artwork and making it into a video to be made available to the public in October. We're really excited about it and want to encourage everyone, whether you consider yourself an artist or not, to get involved in this way, because we know that there's a lot of talent here in East Point, and we want to be able to highlight it. So, I'd actually hope that the city council members could reach out to some of the folks who have applied to the, to ACDC in the past and have not been appointed as chair, I don't have access to information, and maybe encourage them to apply. I think that would be a great first step in these folks, to bring them to the table and see if they want to get involved. And, you know, let's feature their talents too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for what you do. Anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, at this time, I see no other individuals who would like to speak.
Okay, well, the second hearing of the public is now closed. I want to thank everybody who spoke for your comments and your concerns.
Excuse me, ma'am, someone put in the chat that they were trying to speak, I don't know if they knew how to raise their hand.
Okay, um, thank you. Mr. Fairbrother, you see that person?
Uh, yeah, they don't have their hand raised, but Mandy, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, I wanted to speak again and answer questions from the public that they were questioning about the event at Foot Locker.
Well, you can't address the, you can't address, just like we would have it at, at City Hall, you can't address the, you can't address the people. So, again, if anyone has any questions, you can also email Ms. Doom. But we don't have any audience members like we would if here, we were inside, to address the audience. Would you like to say anything else, Ms.?
I continue to address you in regards to the Foot Locker.
No, you can't, you can't address me, again.
I said council?
Yes, ma'am, you sure can. When you're ready, let me know so I can find you.
I don't think I stuttered, but I, I said council, I'd like to address you again.
Okay, go ahead, your time now.
If anyone would like to see the complete video from 4 o'clock to 5:30, and the conversations of that video of everything that went on at Foot Locker that day, I would be more than happy to share that with anybody, including the city manager, the attorney. Okay, because, yes, I'm thinking racism is, is involved. How is this city going to be diverse with this going on at a public event? This has to stop somewhere, this has to stop somewhere. And it's going to stop somewhere. And for anybody on their council, not to say they apologize for what happened to me, that was devastating to me for what they did because I was not in the wrong. I was more than 50 feet away from this woman when this incident took place, all night long. And it's going to stop, and that's all I got to say. Like I said, email me, I'm on Facebook. I have the full, whole thing of the video. Thank you, council members.
Thank you again, and thank you for always coming to my events and videotaping me to show what I do in a community, I appreciate you. Now, the second hearing of the public is now closed. Thank you, everyone who attended and spoke. And next, we're going to go Mayor and Council reports. We're going to start with Councilman DeMonico.
Thanks, and before I address, I guess, probably the obvious item here, I've seen that Ms. Erin Hardcastle and Mr. Otis Gadsden are on the call. I just wanted to say hello to them, and thanks for coming out. I think you were both on the last city council call too, so appreciate it. And one day, we'll meet each other in person at some point, when maybe we are not under such a pandemic times. Then, term limits for the boards and commissions, I guess, I should have probably prefaced that a little bit more, everyone. I was just bringing some ideas forward, some because I thought maybe they were good ideas, some because we've talked about them in the past. Not looking to, you know, Sheila, I'm not looking to kick you off the planning commission. I was just bringing it up to see what everyone thought, and it, it was, I was glad to hear what everyone said about that. You know, some commissions, of course, seems like are perpetually unfilled, so, yeah. Having term limits wouldn't make sense, and for other various reasons, and if someone is dedicated to a commission, we wouldn't want to lose a good member. So, I think it was good just to, just to discuss that. And so, everyone, again, wear masks, let's get this pandemic done with. I think it's going to be quite a few more months, but keep wearing masks, social distance, do what you can, you know, keep joining Zoom meetings instead of in-person meetings. And in terms of Zoom meetings, I look forward to one we have later this month. And a couple of you, you know, Ms. Yulinski, Mr. DeDeHaute, we're meeting with you at the end of the month for a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, so I'm looking forward to that. So, everyone get all your notes ready on that, with McKenna there and Ms. Van Herren. And I, I think that'll be a good discussion to move the 2040 master plan forward. Good to see that Constitution Week is starting this week, as the mayor said earlier with the proclamation. If everyone maybe run through the Constitution again at this point in time, you know, just reread it, it's not a super-long document. So, read it again, get yourself familiar with it. And, um, I guess then to, well, it's still brain aneurysm awareness month too, I guess I'll bring that up. So, learn a thing or two about that, and then, just this, we can go back to this police issue here. From what I am seeing here is, to me, is the PD is not being used appropriately by a council member. This is not the first time that.
Well, I will not do, Councilman DeMonico, well, you will not assume, and you will not suggest that I did something wrong. You will not do that. You will not, because I can assume a lot about you. And you are doing some things in front of our, our residents that is not right. Now, if you want to have a conversation with me, you should have done that. If you want to have a conversation with the director or Ms. Doom, you can do that. But you will not sit there as a councilman and disrespect me like that, like you did another meeting. You're not going to keep doing that. I will not allow it, because you keep doing it, and I have several residents that say you keep doing it. I don't like it, okay? I don't like it. You will not sit there and assume something I did without asking me and having a conversation. Now, if something happened on a Thursday, as a councilman, you should have called me and emailed me, or talked to the director or Ms. Doom. But you will not openly and publicly try to embarrass me and say and assume something that is not true.
Madam Mayor, I don't.
Do you understand me?
No, because, I mean.
If you don't understand me, then let's keep moving on. Until you want to have a discussion with me, you know my number, you know my email, and you know where the office is. But I will not allow you to disrespect me or any other council member and say something out loud that's not true without having the facts.
It's not true.
I will not continually stand and be bullied by you or residents assuming something you cannot ask a mayor.
All right, what happened?
You continuously do it. Now, if you want to talk to me, you talk to me respectfully, like you want someone to talk to your wife. So, you will not keep doing that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Speaking of my wife.
We're going to keep moving, we're going to keep moving forward.
She's one of the people you called the police department.
We can, we can, what do you want to do? We're not going to do this.
Fine, whatever I'm done, I think it's inappropriate. Let's have the ethics.
You don't know what's appropriate, you can say ethics all day. But you have been unethical the last couple meetings in talking to me any kind of way and assuming something. So, you're going to be ethical, speak right. You put the board together, act like you got some sense, okay? Because I won't tolerate how you continuously come and bash me and try to bully me. You're not going to do it to me or a council, because no one does it to you. So, I'm moving along, because this is not how we conduct business here, and I apologize to all that's listening. We're going to continue this, unless you want something else to say that you know facts about, Mr. DeMonico, I don't want to cut you off.
No, I think we've said enough just now, so.
Okay, well, you know my number, and if you would like to talk to me tomorrow, or you want to get facts, then I will sit and talk with you anytime. I have no problem with that, and I have no problem with talking to anyone else. So, Ms. Doom, if he likes to talk to you, then we can do that. I have no problem with talking to council. Mr. Crowley, Councilman Crowley, I know you had a 9:45 appointment, and, uh.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to go back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and a couple things. I attended the library commission meeting tonight, and they have a continuing fundraiser of people putting bottles and cans in a box out in front of the library, and they cash them in and get the money. So, I'm asking everyone who's going to be watching this to take their bottles and cans and deposit them. And, you know, and don't tell me that you got 10 cans and you want to cash them yourself, that's a dollar. Come on, get real, get real. The library is an incredible institution in any city, and it's an incredible institution here in East Point. And that money that they raise for that, for those bottles and cans can go a long way. They can buy new computers, they can buy new books, and there are so many books coming out right now, as you know. Every week, there's a new book coming out, so you want to read that, but you can't if they can't buy it. Every week, there's a new book coming out. So you want to read that, but you can't if they can't buy it. So, so do that. Cardi, the nice thing about council members is that they can have a difference of opinion. And my opinion about the upcoming planning commission meeting is this. There are, there would be seven members from the planning commission, five members from the council, plus three or four other people. So we're looking at 15 or 16 people trying, on Zoom, trying to get the attention of whoever's going to lead that thing, and I don't think it's working. So I would, I would ask the council, and perhaps I might even ask to put it on the agenda at our next meeting, to wait until such time that we can actually be in the same room and talking to each other, eyeballing one another, seeing your facial expression, and raising your hand when you want to be recognized. So I really am not excited about having a Zoom meeting with 16 or 17 or 18 people. So that, so that's that. I'm frustrated in one thing, folks, and let me tell you, and there's no, there's no solution right now. But, you know, we get so many calls and so many emails about people saying, why aren't you doing somebody about, something about these people speeding down my street? Well, let me tell you right now, right now, 100%, our police are doing an incredible job. They are writing a lot of tickets for people speeding down residential streets. They really are. So I don't want to hear anymore, say, where is a policeman? Well, this is a big city when you've got two or three cars out there. And I don't know what the solution can be. We have these two cars that live down the street that speed by my house. I don't know how fast they go. You know, I don't have a gun to find out what speed they are, but I can believe it's probably 50 miles an hour. So solution number one, put speed bumps on. Well, where do I put a speed bump? Between Stevens and Forest or Forest and Haas or Haas and 10 Mile Road? I mean, how many speed bumps can I put up? Is that going to help? I don't know. And they would have to come up in the wintertime because of shoveling the snow, right? Of course. Secondly, do I put a yield sign? Well, yield sign isn't going to do any good. The third option that we could talk about and to take a look, and I wish the police chief was here. I don't see his name on there, but a stop sign, a four-way stop for the entire city. We've got to think about something, guys, to stop the speeders. I've got so many young kids right across the street. I've got seven young, young kids, young tots, that someday they're gonna, I'm getting excited, so forgive me, but someday, something's going to happen. Somebody said, well, Harvey, walk down the street, you know where that guy lives, knock on the door. I said, yeah, right. I'm going to go down. One elderly guy's going to go down with a mask on, knock on his door and tell the guy he's speeding and going too fast. I don't know what's going to happen. I'll be honest with you. I'm afraid. I'm afraid to do that. One solution somebody said you could do, and that's why I was hoping the chief was here, but I'll call him tomorrow. You can go down, take a picture of his license plate and give it to the police. This happened in another city too, and I think it might have been Rose or Warren. The police came, knocked on the door and said that we have, we have calls that you've been speeding down the street. We're going to be watching you. Maybe we can do that too. But folks, I'm tired of, I'm tired of you writing on the computer that is a police fault. It's not their fault. It's our society, and we've got to find a better way to do it. And I don't have an answer, but I'm really frustrated about it. So as I entered the last couple of meetings, we talked about love and with what's going on in the country, love might be the only answer. So let me give you a couple of things. It used to be Mother Teresa, right? And now it's Saint Teresa. She once said that love is not something you do. Love is something you say. Saint Francis once said, preach the gospel always, but when necessary, use words. You understand what he said? And love isn't love unless you give it away. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Crowley. I'm going to go to Councilman Baker.
Oh, well, just thank you, everybody, for attending. I'm not going to belabor anybody. We have Gleaners this Thursday at 9:30. It's at the middle school. They were doing it at the high school for a short period of time while there was construction, but it is now back at the middle school on 10 Mile and Kelly. And that will be at 9:30. Line up early to make sure you get something to help either your family or someone you know in need. And that is pretty much all I have. I mean, tell everybody, you know, we're still going through some funny times in the world. A lot of things going on all across the world. Just be kind to one another, show love to one another, be peaceful to one another, and give respect to everyone. That is the easiest thing you can do, and it is free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem, Lucido.
First, I would like to start out by thanking everyone who joined our meeting tonight and to take a moment to thank all of our boards and commissions for all of your hard work. And I don't want you guys to think that any of us, even the ones, you know, even if we talk about term limits or anything, we all do definitely appreciate everything you guys do, and we know all the hard work and dedication you put into those. I would like to take a moment to, you know, give my thoughts and prayers to all of the people who are dealing with the wildfires out West and with Hurricane Sally. My sister lives in Alabama. She's been affected by the hurricane. They've been getting a lot of rain right now. It's supposed to hit in the morning, so I'm praying for all of them. And I would also like to add on our next agenda, speaking of that, filling some empty vacant seats on our boards and commissions. So I would like to encourage everyone to put in your applications. We will definitely have some openings. I believe we have, we're going to have opening on the, possibly on the Parks Commission. We're going to have openings on beautification. So definitely put in your applications. I know beautification for sure definitely has openings. So we are always looking for volunteers. So other than that, I think that's all I have this evening, mayor.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I want to thank everyone for attending and all those who attended the hearing of the public. I want to apologize to those listening because this is, you know, going back and forth with council and getting loud and over talking to one another and also allegedly saying things about another council member. That is not how our city wants to be looked at because people are looking at us. And to say that we are about equality, fairness, and love, we need to start showing it, and it starts with your leadership. So I'm going to first apologize for not only for myself, but the council member that spoke out loud and, you know, because that's not appropriate. So also, I want to thank the Foot Locker and all sponsors for doing a census drive, helping us raise our census, helping us to get out to vote, in which information about the ranked choice voting was given out. And I want to thank you to the McComb County Clerk, Mr. Miller, for coming out and helping us with that. We also packed out backpacks for our community and all the sponsors in our community. For Bless Hands, Foot Locker, Enjoy Detroit, it's awesome. We've got communities from outside of East Point, outside of McComb, still want to see us grow, and I really appreciate that. Even Mr. Dre was a part of that, which he's always a part of our community. The last couple of years, he's been giving out free haircuts for police and the kids in our community so that those that cannot afford or can afford haircuts, that they can look nice when they are going back to school. Also, since we're talking about Mr. Dre's barbershop, again, I want to thank you for hosting the appreciation day for our first responders and also of members of 9/11. It was something that wasn't planned, but it was needed. And in any event that I have, the last couple of meetings, I always invite council. They're always welcome to attend any of these. I would even, I think it'd be more effective if council came so that it's seen as a whole event, no matter who's giving the event or who's hosting the event. This is our city, and you have elected us to be a part of our community. And so I feel like that's part of our job as well. I'm also happy to see the increase of new businesses in our city as well. Those who already look at my Facebook page strongly and follow me with their phones, they can see that I go to so many different businesses and support them. So I want to thank the new businesses for investing in East Point and coming to East Point. Also, I want to thank you to the director and the City of East Point Police and their reserves for making sure our city is safe. We have the bike patrol. I know a lot of people have seen that. And the foot patrol, they're doing an amazing job, so keep it up and keep doing your job. Also, I want to say thank you to my mayor, Pro Tem, for always assisting me in so many ways so I can better do my job. And also, all of the directors, from the finance director to Ms. Blum, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Blum, you know, Ms. Doom, Mr. Abraham, DPW, everybody who's a part of this city. I want to thank you for helping me do my job and also the residents who always email me with their concerns and keep me abreast of what's going on. I want to say thank you so much for helping me do my job that you elected me to do, and I will do my very best. Saying that, moving forward, we're going to go to a closed session. And then you guys can come back. We're just going to be leaving. So we're going to a closed session for attorney-client privileged communication concerning the marijuana regulations and also the legal information for Brandon Fornier. Counsel?
Madam Mayor, there's also the, the legal opinion regarding the Raphael LLC versus Oakland County Supreme Court case.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we would go into closed session for all the reasons you stated.
Okay. Move this support. Please call the roll. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
I had a question there, though, before we vote.
I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
On the marijuana regulations, Mr. Albright, what, more specifically, I just want to make sure that the discussions on topic for the closed session.
Yes, there's very specific parameters that I want to discuss, which were outlined in my email dated August 23rd.
Okay, so the, okay.
It shouldn't be a very long conversation.
Okay.
Famous words I know.
Yeah, right.
Thanks a lot.
I've got a bridge you could buy too, Rich.
Anything else, Mr. Councilman DeMonaco?
No.
Okay, thank you. I have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Crowley.
Yeah.
Councilperson Lucido.
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilperson Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. We are moving into closed session. If you want to put the participants in another row.
We're going to take 10 minutes, right, Madam Mayor? Are we already gone? Mayor Pro Tem, can we take 10 minutes?
Five minutes. Ten minutes.
Now, do I, do I have to close on?
I think she froze. I think, no, you stay on. I think she froze.
No, members of council and administration, I will be enabling the waiting room now, which will force all non-recognized individuals from the closed session. So you guys do not have to do anything.
We're doing the 10 minutes, so let's be back when we look at the time.
So I don't have to, right, I don't have to do anything. You stay on.
Harvey, you just have to sit there.
I'm just, I'm going to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, sounds good.
So let's do 9:12. If we are here before that, we can keep it moving, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, again.
Hello, Rich.
Hi, Oki.
I'm hitting the hard stuff.
All right. Vodka in there?
No, unfortunately, it's just orange juice. I need my vitamin C after this meeting.
Yeah, I love orange juice.
Oh, I'm telling you. Are we done yet?
Close.
Well, good night, everybody. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I can't say that yet.
No, no, we were, I was just saying that. Are we done yet?
No, I know, I know. I just chimed back in. Couldn't miss that opportunity.
I'm prepared. I'm loading up on my orange juice and my vitamin C.
Oh, I got a feeling this is going to be really quick closed session. I'm feeling it. I'm feeling it.
If not, Rob, I'm ready.
You're ready, buddy. I got my tropicana.
Hey, hey, Randy, did you get a, did you get a note left with that sucker?
Oh, yes, I did. And actually, the problem is it threw me because Beth wrote it, so it's a female handwriting. And I'm like, well, who the heck did this come from? And then she had to explain it was you. I'm like, okay, all right, that makes sense.
We can't make it easy, right? You can't make it easy.
Oh, never, never.
Eat your heart out, you guys. Eat your heart out.
What's that? We get the mayor, Pro Tem, on here, and Councilman DeMonaco, we can be ready to go.
Hi, mother.
We're going to be through this in like, like.
Like nine minutes?
I'll spill it.
You said 10 minutes. It's only been four.
We're in a hurry.
Are you eating ice cream?
All this chocolate is so, so good.
Oh, gee whiz, coming over.
No, me too.
Hey, after party at Harvey's house.
Come on over. I never locked the door. I never locked the door when I was a kid, so I never locked the door, no.
Really?
Between three houses and.
Good for you, Harvey. I'm the exact same way.
Yep. Oh.
What? Oh, no. No, no. You know, that'll cost you tomorrow. You better stop by the office and bring me my cup too.
Ice cream. What an idea.
Down there, here, Ms. Harmon.
Wow. Yeah, I didn't realize you had dessert tonight during our meeting. Right?
I'm telling you.
Got everybody here. I don't see Councilman DeMonaco. See him?
Not yet. Okay.
See, this is all I have. This is all I have is water, alkaline water.
Me too. Oh, alkaline, excuse me. Excuse me.
Everybody got to step their game up.
Well, I won't, I won't tell you what was in my big cup during the regular meeting.
Yours was water, yours was water with a twist. That's all. That's what we'll say.
You guys got to, yes.
With a twist.
It's called sangria.